To the regularly scheduled public meeting of Shreveport Cattle Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission, would like to ask that you would join us today as we will share in our invocation. Ask Mr. Andrews to share in our invocation and ask for Mr. Young to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for this opportunity to serve this, your community, our people. We pray that you continue to cover us up with wisdom and knowledge and above all, an understanding as we deliberate to request that these our citizens bring before this group today. We pray all these in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to serve our home with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and all.
Thank you, and again, I want to welcome you to this regularly scheduled public meeting. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make comments on an application, we have MPC comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it's very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, your mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the applicant and then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allotted to the principal spokesperson with three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against the application. Again, ten minutes are allotted to the principal speaker and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if so desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of this board's decision on a particular case by contacting our office at 318-673-6480 after 1:00 PM tomorrow or by accessing our website at shreveportcattlempc.com. For consent agenda items and other agenda items not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon request by filling out a MPC comment slip. If comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission taking action on that agenda item. All of the MPC board decisions are subject to appeal either to the city council or to the parish commission, depending on the location of the property in question. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing body about their procedures as related to the matter that you are concerned with. Copies of this document and phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and also in the entryway to this room. Ladies and gentlemen, as a courtesy to yourselves as well as us, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the MPC board is in session. The commission values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. Thank you so much again, and welcome to our regularly scheduled public meeting. Our first agenda item, item five, approval of minutes of our October 4, 2017 meeting. Ladies and gentlemen.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Andrews, a second by Ms. Smith, to approve the minutes. Are any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, vote yes. All opposed, no.
No, that's very good.
Fine, it's not up.
All in favor, if you would, would you please show by raising a right hand. All in opposition likewise. As have it for the record, that is nine, nine for, none against. Our next item is our consent agenda. On our consent agenda, we have two cases. Two cases on our consent agenda, case number SP 132-17 and SP 138-17. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, motion to approve.
Yes, sir.
I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Andrews to approve the two cases that are on our consent agenda. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, vote yes. All opposed, no. It didn't register mine. Just show a hand if you will, all in favor. All opposed likewise. Let the record reflect nine, zero, in favor of accepting the consent agenda items. If you are here in reference to case, agenda item six or seven, it's been approved. You're certainly welcome to stay, but just wanted to know that those cases have been approved. Next, we have our public hearing. Cases for public hearing. First case is case number C, A-4-17, closure and abandonment.
Is that one? Anyone? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is William Toulton. I represent the Office of the City Engineer, 505 Travis Street, Suite 300, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I'm here to represent the City of Shreveport and CAP Equipment Company for the closure and abandonment of a 20-foot street dedication that's set forth in the Tucker subdivision. The City of Shreveport and CAP Equipment Company are in the process of acquiring this property for the relocation of City Fire Station Number 14, and CAP Equipment Company owns all the adjacent property to this alley or to this street dedication. Currently, there is a power line which serves a billboard which faces Interstate 20. We will retain a servitude for that power line in the meantime. However, upon construction of the fire station, we're looking at removing that service line and relocating it as part of the construction plan.
All right. Any questions? All right, thank you. Is anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application? All right. Is anyone here to speak against this application or in opposition? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve.
Second.
I have a, somebody after has a question.
Big boy toys?
Yes.
Your question is on case number C, A-4-17?
That's right. I have all property. Big boy toys.
If you would, for the record, state your name, mailing address.
Okay, my name is Herbert Williams, Jr., and my mailing address is 8116 Wild Brown. Okay, my question or my concern is the whole potential area that you're talking about closing and seizing, you know, like I said, I got property right there, big boy toys, and I want to know if it's going to have any kind of effect on that property.
No, basically, I don't see that it will actually have a negative effect on your property because that property, that was never a developed street, so it should be minimal effect.
Okay. All right. That's it. Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you.
Could you restate, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Smith, to approve. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, vote yes. All opposed, no.
It doesn't appear that the system is working, Mr. Chair.
So we have nine for, none against. That is approved. Our next case is case number C, -72-17. Is on a request?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Tom Arseneau, 333 Texas Street, Suite 700, Shreveport, 71101. I represent Progressive Bank in this case. And I'm pleased to tell you that after a good bit of discussion and give and take, the Dr. Wood and Progressive Bank have come to something that's acceptable to both of them and that we hope will be acceptable to you. First of all, the property would be rezoned C1. What happens with Golf Ridge Drive depends on some factors that we are not completely sure about right now. So what we have is two alternatives, both of which are acceptable to both parties, but to be determined how that's going to come out. And what I'd like to do, I'm going to kind of go through it a little bit for you. It'll be a little bit painstaking. And then I have the printout from Mr. Irwin that he sent me that we finally said, this'll work. And the only reason it's highlighted is that, as they might say, that was the last end over the fence. That was the last little piece that we added. I needed to show it to my client. So we will email it. We will email this to you. So that, oh, good, thank you. Well, then we have printed copies. Thank you. Matt, you do that? The two alternatives that deal with Golf Ridge Drive are, one, the construction of the portion of Golf Ridge Drive that joins the bank's property to parish standards and the acceptance of that road by the parish. We're still not sure about the cost of that. We thought we had it tied down. Turned out, we don't have it tied down. So we worked it out either way. But what we would hope to do then is that beyond the point of that construction, we hope the parish would revoke the dedication. So that the piece of property, if you have it, if you look on the second page, there is a diagram. The, and I can kind of use that to go through this with you. The part that is shown as Progressive Bank, that part, if it remains a public road, would be improved to parish standards. And then the parish would accept that road in its system so that the parish would maintain that part of the road. Beyond that would be revoked. So that the part in front of Dr. Wood's house and Mr. Militello's house would become undedicated. And they would then grant each other rights of passage so that they could use it and they would maintain it. And then Progressive Bank will transfer its half of that property because when it's, when it's undedicated, it reverts to half and half. Progressive Bank will convey its half of that road to Dr. Wood and Mr. Militello respectively, so that they will be able to have, they will be able to deal with it and won't have to deal with the bank. Okay? The other option, and then there's some other conditions dealing with some fencing, so that the fencing will come, the fence that goes around the property will continue toward the drive. Progressive Bank has agreed to move its drive closer to Elleby Road. There's a ravine there that is, it's a little hard to see on this map, but we will move the driveway to the other side of that ravine so that it's further away from Dr. Wood's property and closer to Elleby Road. And if DOTD requires it to be further back, then we'll do whatever DOTD says, but our intention is to move it beyond, beyond that ravine. Everybody will maintain their, will maintain the private areas, the undedicated areas, at their expense and grant rights of passage to each other. So I think what this does, then the other parts of our site plan that dealt with the buffer and the fencing, that's all still, that's all still acceptable to Progressive Bank. And so that's how we have come to an agreement as to how we will do this, and the property will be zoned C1. That, with the new classification, that will give Progressive Bank the right to its drive-through window. And so let me express our gratitude to Dr. Wood, to Mr. Irwin, to Mr. Young, who was particularly helpful in trying to help us work through this, the MPC staff. This is a pretty good example of people with very divergent views being able to come to a common solution. And I think it's a real win-win for everybody concerned, and Progressive Bank is really pleased with it. So we've passed out what our agreement is. We'd like it to be part of your minutes so that everybody knows what everybody's expectations are going forward, and we would respectfully request your approval of this, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. Look, I love seeing all those smiles.
Thank you, Mr. Arseneau. Any, any questions or comments?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, what we prefer, assuming that you vote favorably on this, what we'd like to do is to postpone the next case, just to keep it on your agenda until after the city council has acted, has acted on, on the first case. So we would ask that you simply postpone it, and at some point, we'll withdraw that, we will withdraw that application. Great. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the application? Anyone here to speak in opposition? All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, in light of the agreement that was worked out, I'm glad to make the motion to approve the C1 for the drive-through.
Second.
With this letter attached, it's becoming part of the record.
Now, I have to make a motion, you can't, or a statement here, you can't condition the zoning approval.
No, 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 I'm not conditioning, just as this is part of the record.
Yeah.
Attached is as part of the record.
That's perfect.
Yes, yes. Just as part of the record.
So I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Smith, to adopt with this letter just being added as a part of the record. Any questions? Seeing none. All in favor, vote yes. All opposed, no. Oops. All right, that is approved, nine to zero. Our next case, referenced by Mr. Arseneau, is case number C, A1-17, special use permit. Any, what should this?
Motion to defer.
Second.
Do you have to call your opposition?
Is there anyone who is here to speak in opposition to case number A1-17, A1-17? Item 10 on the agenda?
Yes.
In opposition to item 10?
Oh, no, sorry. I thought they, that was.
Okay, all right. So seeing none, I have a, I have a motion to defer and continue by Mr. Young, a second.
No, Mr. Andrews, I think.
Mr. Andrews, I'm sorry. Mr. Andrews, a second by Ms. Daymore, too. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, vote yes. All opposed, no. To defer and continue.
I said yes.
Oh, you hit no box, didn't you?
I meant yes.
You want to, you want to just, that's okay. So let, let the record reflect nine for, zero against, and for this to defer and continue. Our next case is item, agenda number 11, case number C, -102-17, a special use permit in site plan. The applicant here to speak.
Mr. Chair, my name is Bernie Woods, and I reside at 3001 Curtis Lane, Shreveport, Louisiana. I am the owner of Lakeshore Liquor Beer and Wine Number One, which is located at 2700 Lakeshore Drive. I am applying for, or zoning for, the one on King's Highway. As a part of my statement, I'd like to give the body here today a little bit of background about myself, and only because I think it's germane to the nature of the zoning I'm required, I'm seeking, which is liquor permit. I was born and raised in Shreveport, Louisiana. I attended Louisiana Tech University where I graduated with a degree in aviation. After graduation, I went to the Officer Candidate School where I was commissioned as an officer in the United States Air Force. After that, I went to pilot training where I became a pilot in the United States Air Force and did six years. After completing my six-year tour of duty with the Air Force, I came back to Shreveport, Louisiana, and became one of the first African-American car salesmen in the city of Shreveport back in the early 70s. I sold cars for Clemens Lincoln Mercury for approximately 13, 14 years. I finally got into management, and I went from managing all the way to going to the NADA Academy, which where I went and completed the academy for becoming a dealer. As some of the body knows, I partnered with someone in California and became a 50/50 partner in a Ford dealership in California. After being there for several years, I sold that position and came back to Shreveport and bought a Ford dealership here, which was Stonewall, which is South Point Ford. That didn't work because of the issues with Ford and General Motors and Chrysler when they went through their bankruptcy. So I, I lost the dealership, and since then, I got out. And when Hurricane Katrina came, I became a worker for FEMA. I became a contractor for FEMA. I spent two years in New Orleans, helped building, rebuilding New Orleans and Mississippi on the Corps of Engineers. Once that was over, I became a retail liquor operator at, on Lakeshore. I give that background in order for this body to know that there is character in what I say and that I operate a business in a very professional military way. There has been low adverse effects to the community from my operating business on Lakeshore, which has been now seven years. The records will reflect that I have no citations, no violations, and that my place is clean and operated according to law. There are no complaints on the cemetery, and there are no illegal activities going there. I offer that because that would be my intention, if I'm successful, in acquiring the zoning for the Circle K on King's Highway. It is exactly the same building, and it would be my intent to operate it in the same manner that I operate the one on Lakeshore Drive, which is clean and decent and professionally run. I, I don't have any negatives that would, that I'm sure that the citizens of the city are concerned about impacting the business now, and I want to ensure the citizens of this city that there won't be any over there if I'm successful.
All right. Thanks, sir. Any, any questions for Mr. Woods?
I have a question.
Oh, I don't see.
Could you just spend the space?
Yep. All right, I just, so, I don't, that queue is not working. I don't, I don't see it anyway. So Ms. Smith?
Yes. Well, I'm glad to see you.
Thank you.
Think you sold me a car in the 70s, Ray Langham, whatever it was, but it was a beautiful car.
Thank you.
You handled yourself in a professional way, but I want to know if you ever, did you meet with the residential people in that area?
I, I attempted to do that. I actually called some of the residents and tried to get an appointment. Now, I did meet with several other residents. I did not start a petition as I was told to do so, a petition in favor of by several other residents. I did meet with several other residents that were in favor of me. I also reached out and made a phone call to one of the gentleman, I believe, his name was Mr. Atkins. I called him personally to try and have a meeting with him. I did not receive a return call. But I did make an effort to do that, and I did meet with several other residents, some of here now within that community that were in favor. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Curtis had a question.
So, who, oh, Curtis, I'm sorry. I want to get this, go ahead, Curtis.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Woods.
Good afternoon.
As I appreciate it, the staff has made several recommendations regarding your application. You've been made aware of those?
Yes, sir.
And are there any of the staff recommendations that caused you any difficulty, or will you be able to adhere to the staff recommendations?
Yes, sir. Some of the recommendations are not within my privy, mainly the one with closing the driveway. That recommendation is not in my privy because I'm on a lease and the landowner has, has questions about that. So I'm not, I'm not able to, to say that I can accomplish that. Now, the other recommendations in terms of fencing, in terms of everything else, but the driveway is one that I, I, it's not in my privy.
Okay, Curtis, did that answer?
Well, I guess I take that question then up with Mr. Sweeney.
As far as who the landlord, typically the landlord is usually present in this kind of.
He's here.
And he will be speaking.
So we'll defer that question to him. But as it regards things that are within your control, you indicate to this board that you can.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Ladies?
Yeah, the, I pulled up your other store across town, and I know that, you know, you don't know what day Google's going to take your picture. So I said, you don't know what day Google's going to take your picture on Google Earth to see what your store looks like. So it's completely at random, but it does seem, there's clean and it's, it's nice, respectable-looking store. But my question would be if there's.
It's that way inside, too, sir.
Sir?
It's that way inside, too.
Okay, wonderful, yeah. But are there things that you feel like that you do that are different than the way other people operate that, that reduce the amount of the negative effects or negative perception on the community?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm, that's, just your.
Yes, sir, absolutely. First of all, I am, or we are a family-owned business. Family meaning myself, my wife, and my son, and some other family members. We run and operate the business. And the thing will be true with this one. We would do the same thing. My son is of age, and actually, I have three sons, and my wife and myself and family. We operate the business. There are strict policies and procedures that we adhere to, and that, that comes from my military background. If you have a good process in place and you absolutely adhere to it on a daily basis, you will find that you will have a much better success. We do not allow any sagging pants in my, in my facility right now. Sagging pants, it's noted, no sagging pants allowed, absolutely no profanity in there. If any patrons come in my store with pants sagging, we make them leave immediately. I don't care what they're purchasing, they're just not allowed to do it. Same, same as with, same as with profanity. We allow no profanity whatsoever in there. We do not allow anyone to linger once they make that purchase, either in the store or outside the store. They must leave, and I police that religiously. They just simply cannot hang there at all. I do not open on Sunday. I could have opened from the time I've been in business until now. Never open on Sunday. I know that they have passed a law to open on Sunday, but I never open on Sunday. I believe that's Church Day and Family Day, so I don't operate on Sunday. I walk, physically walk the property several times per night, make sure that no one's outside. I also get to know all of the neighbors and people who shop in my store. Once you get to know these people and they give you respect and you respect them, you'll find that they will help you police and keep a place in order.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions.
Mr. Young and Ms. Cooper?
This one is for, Mr. Woods, if you'll hang up. Woods, correct?
Woods, yes, sir.
Okay. This one's for Mr. Sweeney, if I could. Currently, like the broochers down the street does not have hard liquor or, but there were proposed changes that may change that in the near future? Is that a fair statement?
Well, I think we're going to be careful because I think the broochers there on King's Highway may have some measurement issues because of the proximity of the school.
Okay.
So I think there's some, there's some limiting factors there that aren't present in this case.
Okay. I was just curious if, if conditions were changing or perceived to be changing in the near future that may open, other than the broochers with proximity to the public school for other entities with, because we're constantly looking at this changing. With, because we're constantly looking at this changing environment.
The measurement factor is one of the things that we want to get clarified in the Chapter 10 revisions. Remember, all the alcohol codes for the city are in Chapter 10 and there have already been a series of revisions. This gentleman already made reference to one where they're going to allow people to be open on Sundays and for longer hours than they work for. That's already been approved. There's other ones that are being talked about to eliminate the separation wall requirement that you often see like at Albertson's and at the Kroger, where you have the alcohol cells in one part of the building but it's sealed off as a separate, with a separate wall and you have a separate entrance. That's probably going to be one of the changes that will be made in the near future in Chapter 10. One of the things that's being talked about is clarifying the measurement process. Right now, there's a little bit of ambiguity about that, how the measurements are taken. And I know that Alan Clark is responsible for doing the measurements, but one of the things we've talked about doing is strengthening that wording and making it more clear as how you measure from, let's say, a school or from a daycare type facility to be able to make certain that you're meeting the letter of the law as well as the spirit of the law. In this particular piece of property, they don't have to worry about measurements because they're not near a school or a daycare. They're beyond the measurement requirement situation that we're talking about.
Okay. One other thing, could you speak about the legal determination, the differences between low content alcohol sales beer wine versus what we call hard liquor? And the delineation within Section 10 of how that is determined? Is there a percentage level of alcohol that determines it? Or is there a...
I'm not, I don't have...
I kind of put you on the spot there, but...
I don't have the gentleman from, from the Police Department to probably give you the clearer interpretation of that. There is a variation in the amount of alcohol. What is classified as high alcoholic content? I don't know what that definition is, but it typically, as we're talking about your liquors, anything above your wine level, beer level is considered basically what we call a high alcoholic content type beverage. So, that definition is in the Chapter 10 and probably will be further amended to make that even clearer as we go forward. Again, that's the city doing that, not the MBC. All we do with the UDC is we defer to Chapter 10.
Right.
Under the current UDC, which was adopted back in 2015 or went into effect in May of 2015, C2 zoning, which is what this has right now, automatically allows beer and wine sales as a matter of right. They don't have to ask for permission for that. In fact, if this gentleman were to build this, were to take over this store and renovate it and open it up to sell just beer and wine and whatever else he wants to sell, he could do so without having to come before this body. But because it goes to the high alcoholic content beverage situation, that steps it up in the UDC that requires a special use permit and that's why he's here today specifically for selling packaged liquor.
Okay. I'm going to pursue this, one more, one more step just so I can get my, fully wrap around this. The Brookshires down the street currently sells, I believe, beer and wine.
I believe you're right.
Okay. If the determination within the code about distance determines that they're outside of that distance to that public school or any other entity precluded, they could go to hard liquor sales?
But they'd have to ask for a special use permit. Just like this gentleman's doing today.
Because there are some current grocery stores that have, they just have a separate, usually a separate interest from the outside to go into that. But that may go away as well. So, would, but they would not apply for special use because they've already approved?
Yes, and they may already be in a zoning that allows for that. I don't know exactly what... I know with the Kroger at Camp Forbing, they got that through the plan unit development process. They got, under their zoning, they were able to get that through. They thought about that long before they came to us to ask for that permission and through the process of a PUD. Some of the other properties may, may already have those approvals because it's allowed or they were given approval through the ZBA. That's typically what happened. If you remember, before the UDC, all alcohol approvals were made by the zoning board of Fields. Now, after May 2015, under the UDC, alcohol sales like the beer and wine that we're talking about from a retail store is a matter of right now in certain districts like C2. We don't have to ask for approval from anybody to do that. The only thing that's not classified requiring an approval in certain circumstances is in case where you want to go with a liquor store or a bar. And typically, that's going to require in most of the districts that allow it, would allow it only through a special use permit, which means there's a public hearing process that allows public input and an official site plan that goes along with that request. So, that's what you're seeing today is a special use permit.
Are there conditions in which, and I don't want to... Don't let me know. Is there conditions in which other items sold within what would proceed to be just a liquor store or a convenience store sold beer, wine, and now they sell hard liquor, but they sell other items? They're not classified as a liquor store? Or is the liquor store because they sell hard alcohol? Because we already have grocery stores that sell hard alcohol. So, where does that delineation disappear?
And you can write an answer.
They're still would be considered a liquor store under the code. So, if they're a grocery store and they wanted to sell liquor, if it is not allowed by right in the district, which in C4 it is, then they would have to get a special use permit.
Got it. Okay.
Sure. Okay. That's, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Cooper and then Ms. Smith?
Yeah, Mr. Woods? What do you anticipate selling in the store besides liquor? Are you going to have any groceries or food components at all?
Absolutely not.
None? So, just hard?
With the exception of amenities, chips, potato chips, you know, the kind of stuff that you have. Not food item, but packaged potato chips, peanuts, the thing that goes along with beer. But that's the extent of it.
Okay. Now, in terms, I'm looking at the recommendations by the staff and one of them has to do with landscaping. I'm looking at your, a picture of your store or your other store, but this was taken last December, so it might not be current. But there is no landscaping. It's just asphalt. And I also see your dump, the dumpster on the side of the road that's not enclosed. So, two of the recommendations are that the dumpster would be enclosed and that there would be some landscaping to make the aesthetics better for the neighborhood. Because you know, this is, this residential, this residential area is right around you. Is that going to be your responsibility or would it be the owners?
I would make it mine. I have no problem with landscaping. And the mention of the other one, it was a non-conformant because it was there. It was already there and was not required to do that in terms of the dumpster and whatnot. So, I keep it clean and the dumpster is a very clean, neat area back there, but not enclosed. But I fully intend to enclose that one and all the landscaping that is required to make it look beautiful out front, I would do because that's just who I am.
And the signage too. One of the recommendations is that the, there be a monument sign or a new sign. But I'm looking at your sign, this is back from December. I don't know if it's current. And it's just a big red liquor. That's all it says. Is that what your sign's going to look like in this neighborhood?
I had anticipated it being a box sign on there, but not just liquor with the name Lake Shore Liquor Beer and Wine.
The name Lake, what was the name?
Lake Shore Liquor Beer and Wine.
Beer and Wine?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm, you don't have houses or residences near your other stores? Is that correct?
Absolutely, directly across the street.
On the other side? Okay.
And right beside it, the Family Dollar, then there's housing.
Oh, there's some. Yeah, okay. Is that a church?
That's, that's my Christian...
It's like a church.
Yeah, that's my Christian neighbor.
Yeah. Okay. And then there's a car dealer on the other corner? Okay. And then, and then a fast food restaurant? Okay. Okay. Is selling groceries in your store something you would be willing to consider?
No.
Okay. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Yes. And Ms. Smith is not familiar with hard liquor or any no kind of liquor. I've heard of beer and wine, but all of this other stuff. But I know you're very, as I say, a professional guy. And I'm just wondering if would you be willing to partnership with the Highland Association? Because they do partnership with our organization. Since you're coming into the area, would you be willing to partnership with them? They have a lot of activities going on in that area. And it's very clean around there.
I think if I understand the question...
You're on that corner.
Yes, ma'am.
But I know exactly where you are.
I, I think if I understand the question, the answer is yes. I would welcome partnership. Depending on what partnership means, does that mean I become...
Active in the community since you're there.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yes. I'm also, I'm, I think that Highland Parade?
Yes, that's where I'm coming from.
Last year, I participated in that parade from my other location. I came and I participated. I bought candy. I rode on a float. I did all of that in Highland. I would absolutely welcome that. I enjoy that kind of thing. I do that where I am. If you would check Lake Shore. I sponsor almost everything over there.
Good. Now you sound great.
I sponsor almost everything they ask me to do over there.
Thank you.
All right. Is that, Ms. Ma'am?
Yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Woods? Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in support of the application?
Bobby Sutton, Sr., 1027 Jordan Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 711 01. Mr. Woods was asked a question earlier about, did he have any objection to the terms set by the staff in the recommendation of approval of the certification? And his answer was yes, there were just one, one of the terms that they had that not concerned the driveways, closing the westernmost driveway. There's two driveways to this facility. And on King's Highway. And he also stated correctly that as the lessee, he had no right to change that property because he doesn't own it. But by the same token, as a businessman, it's his opinion that that facility really cannot operate safely with just that one driveway. And I'd like to point out and make a few comments to the commission here about those, that issue and just reflect my remarks to the requirement of two driveways for that business. The staff pointed out that they wanted to close the western driveway and have a singular driveway going into this business. The problem that we think would create, would be a bigger problem by creating a congestion of automobiles trying to get in and out at the same driveway. As you no doubt know that King's Highway is becoming a commercial corridor. And we have experienced this in our city before. For example, Yuri Drive. I used to live on Yuri Drive many years ago in a home that faced Yuri Drive, believe it or not. Well, you can't find many homes on Yuri Drive now. Same thing happened to Hearn Avenue in West Shreveport. The same thing has happened to other streets in Shreveport, particularly like Lake Shore Drive between Portland and Missouri Avenue. When they become commercial, the residences located there then are converted into businesses. Keep the same structures perhaps, but now they're businesses. And that's what you see on King's Highway. You see these homes that used to be residences, now they're businesses. And in this particular area, there will be another speaker that will address this, but in this particular area, the businesses in these residencies actually outnumber the residential homes. Across the street from this property is a post office directly to the north across King's Highway. To the west is a oil and filter changing Valvoline operation. Catty cornered to that, the northwestern corner of the intersection at Gilbert is the new Circle K that used to occupy this property.
Chairman, time's up.
Pardon?
Should have just reset it.
Any, the time is up. Any move to extend?
So will...
A second.
Got a motion and a second to extend the time. All in favor of yes, all opposed, no?
Can you please speak up a little bit? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry.
Can you please speak up a little bit? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
So, I want to address just a couple of remarks to the driveway situation. And I want to point out basically two things to you. Number one is the Circle K that's across the intersection from this store sells gasoline. When it was in this property, it sold gasoline. Mr. Woods does not intend to sell gasoline. He has no pumps there. So, therefore, those customers will not be coming in and out of this business as they were before. The reduction in traffic to his business will be sufficient, will be great because there will be no gasoline sold. So, consequently, the, the traffic congestion that was proposed for the purpose of eliminating that western driveway should not exist. The second thing I would point out is, is the closing of the western driveway. Most of the residential areas or homes are to the east of this property, not to the west. So, by closing the western driveway, you're actually putting the traffic driveway closer to the residential properties. But we would suggest that as an alternative, well, first thing, if it's required that that property be limited to one driveway, Mr. Woods would not be operating, would not be able to operate this business. And consequently, it's going to be sitting there empty, which it has been since January, by the way. So, as an alternative, if the owner was agreeable, he would accept and could operate this business if a driveway was put onto the Gilbert Avenue to the west edge of this property, which would then allow the entry to, from King's Highway and exit on Gilbert. But I understand from the staff that they did not want to increase the traffic flow on Gilbert Avenue because of the residences back in that area. Even though the Valvoline place right across the street has a entrance exit on Gilbert Avenue right across from this property. So, my suggestion is that the requirement, that the, one of the driveways be eliminated, that that requirement be eliminated. Or alternatively, if the owner is agreeable, to put in a driveway from Gilbert Avenue into this property if you're going to close one of the driveways on King's Highway. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. Any questions from anybody? Young?
Mr. Sutton?
Yes, sir.
Is it Attorney Sutton?
I'm sorry?
Is it Attorney Sutton or is it just...
Yes, I'm on Attorney.
I thought it was. I thought I recognized your name. It is, my understanding that it is the recommendation of the City Engineers' Office that that driveway actually be taken out if it's going to be used in this...
I don't know if that was a recommendation of the City Engineer,
I don't know if that was a recommendation of the City Engineer, but the report said that the City Engineer agreed with the staff's recommendation.
Well, I'll let the staff clarify that, but it was my understanding, because I will tell you that, and while this, I don't know, I don't think this is actually a state highway. I know that the differences in how we do planning nowadays as opposed to what was done in the past, that generally a throated entrance to a business that close to an intersection is generally no longer the desired methodology of entering a property or exiting a property. And so, and I may be wrong about that, but I believe that I am correct about that, is that is generally the idea, is to get them a little bit further beyond.
You know what my response to that would be, Mr. Young, is that the idea would be to get traffic off of Kings Highway as quickly as possible if they're going to enter this business. And the way to do that is not to constrict the entrance and exits to this property, but to enlarge it, which it already has, two driveways. And it seems that you don't have to be an engineer to say, by reducing it to one, you're going to increase the traffic on Kings Highway trying to get off, to sit there with their blinker on.
Right.
While one car is trying to come out, they're trying to get in.
Well, I agree that one in and out of a property, of a commercial property is not probably the ideal scenario. What I'm simply saying is, is the philosophy, at least what I have especially from DOTD, has been to get them away from the actual intersection as much as you could possibly do so. And I think that is pretty much the standard norm, comes down from the feds, comes down from the state DOTDs, that is just the trend is to get that way. But I'll let Mr. Sweeney or Mr. Jean elaborate on that as far as the city engineering. Is this actually a recommendation from them, or was this a recommendation actually that came from the staff?
And the one thing I would also point out, if I may, that on both of these adjacent ones, the Valvoline place and the new Circle K across the street, they both have an exit and entrance on Gilbert, in addition to the one on Kings Highway. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Okay, point well taken.
We posed this question to the City Engineer, asking the traffic engineer what their recommendation would be in this situation, if they concurred with what we thought was the right design, because we were going on the basis of exactly what you said, Alan, which is that the design and the, to mimic basically what was done with Valvoline as well as with Circle K, it made sense to close the westernmost drive. And I'll kind of come back to something we said earlier, we talked about the fact that it's not going to be selling gasoline and the canopy's going to be gone, and you talked about the decline of the amount of traffic. So we know that by closing the westernmost drive, that the driveway that's left is wide enough to accommodate both ingress and egress traffic and can work. And if we're going on the basis of the fact that will be less traffic because of the fact it's not selling gasoline, then that driveway should work adequately for this. The whole intention is to pull as far away from the Gilbert area where the neighborhood is, as far away from there and to get as far away from the intersection itself, not only eliminating traffic conflicts, but to get as far away from the neighborhood as possible. In the neighborhood that's most impacted by this proposed design. It's an attempt to mitigate the effect and the impact of having a liquor store in this location.
Mr. Sweeney, one more quick question. Is the City Engineer going, going to require one driveway, that driveway be taken out?
Under the site plan review, which was what we would have to do, as far as once y'all, if you approve the site plan the way that we're talking about, his comments and his input would be, of course, be sought out after in order to finalize the site plan.
Okay.
We, just as a, going to, just to make a point, we always attempt to communicate with either the City Engineer or the Public Works Director of the parish when it comes to traffic and it comes to access points and driveways. That is a flag to us always, whenever we're looking at a site, whether it's a redevelopment of a site, or if it is a completely new site, that's a key factor that we always communicate very well with the City Engineer and the City Traffic Engineer.
It's, it's, so it's a fair statement that if he decided to leave this as existing C2 and wanted to sell beer and wine and a few other commodities, he wouldn't have to do these things?
He wouldn't have to do anything, because we don't have a mechanism to, because here, when you open the doors, we said earlier with an SUP, you and the board have the right to add on additional stipulations in order to protect the neighborhood. That includes closing driveways, adding additional landscaping, improving the screening, whatever. So you can add that on if it helps the neighborhood in some fashion. So that's the doorway by which we can do that. If he came in today and just renovated the building, didn't add on to the building, didn't add on to the parking, those two driveways would remain until such a point in time as maybe he wanted to expand the site or do something further. That would trigger a review.
The only point I'm trying to make is the caveat of the driveway going away, though, comes in because this is a, going to a different use.
Yes, yes, sir.
And because of that, City Engineering is interjecting that they want that driveway going.
Yes, sir.
That's the point I was trying to get to. Leaving it in its current configuration, he can sell beer, wine and other commodities, and we, basically, he just goes and gets permit and goes and remodels and brings it up.
That's it, he wouldn't have to deal with that.
Given that he's going to a different use, that involved the City Engineering, which with their, their guideline, I won't say recommendation, because it's their guideline, that driveway come out.
That is for.
I just want to make sure I had that right in my head, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, so what we talked about, let me just, and I guess this question again is about what we talked, I guess my question is, it seems like, I think, Mr.
Sutton.
Sutton, thank you, sir, referred to it, that when I looked at it, there's a, the post office, for example, you can't enter from Kings Highway. All of it is, is, well, you can't enter the back of it, but most of it is directed to leave out on Gilbert. You know, and there's two entrances, it looks like, you know, on Gilbert as well. The Valvoline has got two, and these others have two. So even if you were to say the westernmost is the most troublesome, I guess there's no way outside of Gilbert Drive to be able to put a second one. And what he said, though, is a concern that if we bring the traffic down, and it would become probably the only one with just one ingress and, with a single ingress and egress, then, I don't, I don't know, do we know from a, because what I'm hearing is the ingress and egress, if people are trying to do it at the same time, is, do we feel like it's adequate enough space? Obviously, two cars could probably fit.
Yes.
What you're doing is, while traffic is moving, turning in either right or left from across the street, at the same time, is that the, is that enough space to be able to do that appropriately?
And based on the, what, the engineering and traffic people told us, they said that current driveway is adequate in design to handle both ingress and egress.
Okay.
With lesser conflict if you remove the westernmost driveway.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
If I could make one more point.
Sure.
That the prior occupant of this particular property, the Circle K, as I pointed out before, sold gas, but I don't recall any problem being created by these two driveways, which have been there, I don't know how many years, on Kings Highway. So I just mentioned that to you, so that the business that Mr. Woods would be operating would be even less traffic, so I just can't imagine why that two driveways would be a problem.
I have a question for you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Cooper and then Mr. Remedies.
Mr. Sutton, are you the owner of the land of this property?
I'm sorry?
Are you the landowner?
No, I'm the attorney for Mr. Woods, who is the applicant.
Okay, and what's his, what name is that? Who's the, who's the property owner?
Mr. Caston and he is here.
Okay, he is here.
And he intends to speak.
That's the name we have on our sheet, I'm just.
Yes, thank you.
So you're representing him as his, as counsel? Okay, 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 that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Remedies?
Do you know, Mr. Sutton?
I'm sorry?
Just one question, do you know that there would be, and maybe he could answer on rebuttal, but there would be any objections if we were to meet in the middle and say that one entrance, you would install the directional curbing where you only allowed entrance in one, in the first one, in the, in the egress and the second, which kind of helps, it prevents people from turning across.
I understand where you're going, but at the same time, by doing that, you're going to increase the stall time on Kings Highway.
Okay.
Trying to hit that driveway where those directions are.
Yeah.
And, and that's what we're trying to mitigate is.
I understand.
Okay.
But I was just trying to find some kind of compromise where.
I understand, exactly.
Very, that's all I have, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Young?
Mr. Remedies, you referring to like the first driveway as a right in only and the second driveway as a right out only?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I understood what you mean.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sutton. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the application?
Hello, my name's Bill Sanders, and I'm speaking on behalf of the owners, the Caston family. I'm with Bo Box Commercial Real Estate, 5500 Bankers Avenue, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, 70808, though I was born and raised in Shreveport, and have lived in Baton Rouge for a couple years now. I'd like to make a couple points to give you a different perspective a little bit from the owner of the real estate, how he's viewing this. I've marketed this property for the past 12 months, ever since Circle K gave us notice that they were vacating and not going to be renewing their lease, and subsequently moving catty corner across the street. The way I've marketed the property is via a fielding calls, so people who call from my sign, or via online marketing, and then a more offensive approach where I make a list of prospects that I think would be a good use for that building and actually reach out to them and call them personally. Among the types of users I reached out to were restaurants, pizza places, some fast food users which would require demolishing the building and entering into a ground lease with a potential fast food user, auto parts stores, cell phone stores, smoothie, yogurt shops, and none of these groups were interested in leasing the property. I did receive a lot of calls, it's a busy intersection, Kings Highway, and most of the users were for either liquor stores or convenience stores, many of which were non-branded, and by that I mean not affiliated with a Chevron, Shell, Circle K. So it would just be Bob's Convenience Store selling kind of discount gas, that kind of thing. None of those prospects submitted a letter of intent on the property, so we never really got that far with any of them, except for Mr. Woods. And we go through kind of a vetting process to, to make sure that the tenant is credit worthy, and Mr. Woods, from the jump, demonstrated that he has great references, he's been very professional in our dealings with him, and everything about what we've learned about his business is that it would be run in a first-class operation. I'd like to point out something that Mr. Sutton mentioned, which is the stretch of Kings Highway, notably going east from around Highland all the way to really Yuri Drive, the former Don Seafood, we're all familiar with that. And across the street, the Chevron, which is no longer operational. I actually had both of these properties listed back in 2010, and back when I was living in Shreveport, and had a lot less experience than I do now, and I'm sad to see that they have not been put back into commerce. I, I see this all the time, and I know you all do too, that these blighted properties that sit on the market and are boarded up, they're an eyesore, they attract the wrong type of environment and image that we're trying to portray for the city. And when you have an opportunity to put a building back into commerce, get the city some taxes on the property, I think it would benefit the city and the neighborhood.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry to keep interrupting, but the time is up again.
Sure.
And I know y'all are getting upset because I'm calling time.
Yeah, no.
But we put time limits on it, not just for you, but for everybody, to be fair.
I'm rambling.
There's going to be some opposition that wants to come up and speak, okay?
Understood.
So if you could wrap it up, I don't want to cut you off, but you can get into a point.
I'm, I'm finished, if anybody has questions for me.
All right, questions?
You did well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Joseph.
How you doing?
Doing fine.
As I appreciate it, you're speaking on behalf of the owner, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, obviously, my concern is whether or not y'all can deal with closing up this, this other driveway, this entrance. I understand and respect Mr. Sutton, but our staff has advised us that this is a trend as regards development, particularly as it regards these intersections, and it stands to reason that there'd be a need to move the traffic away from the intersection. As you can see, you point to the adjoining property across the street there at the, where Circle K migrated, they went through some lengths, and I understand that that's, it's going to have some costs associated with it. And I guess I'm trying to get at, is that going to be cost prohibitive to you guys and is it going to break your deal?
You know, it's, it's not really a matter of cost, Mr. Joseph, it's, it's a matter of the, the highest and best use for that piece of real estate, not just now in leasing it to Mr. Woods, but in the future. You know, if we give up that driveway, it's gone, and we could always reapply for it down the road, who knows if we're going to get it, but it's, it's going to be gone. And we already don't have access onto Gilbert, and, and in our estimation, there's a, kind of a line of demarcation between the neighborhoods and the commercial corridor of Kings Highway. And, you know, really, we, we just disagree with, with taking away that driveway because for future development of that site, because we would like to see it redeveloped in the future, that lessens the value of the property. So if that's the ultimate recommendation of the MPC, then I'm afraid it's just not going to work for the owner.
On this particular project?
On this project, yes, sir.
Thank you, all right?
All right, thank you.
Is anyone else? Is anyone else here to speak in favor of the application?
My name is Marion Marks, 509 Linden. I've been a resident of this general neighborhood for 37 years. I was part of the group that spoke against the Don Seafood application, even though I didn't speak, I was here. I did my due diligence, I do forensic work, background work on people and applicants for other things. I had a chance to meet Mr. Woods before his application was in. I went to the Lake Shore Liquor, I interviewed his neighbors, I sat on the site and watched how business was conducted. It was A1 business. It was the way you would hope business would be run professionally. He also puts up with no foolishness in that business, which I thought was excellent. And the property is clean, he polices it. There was a, I did a background check on crime in the neighborhood, Mr. Woods is considered to be one of the best citizens supporting the police. There was a mail truck that was stolen out in front of his business, his security cameras were instrumental in assisting law enforcement in the investigation of that theft. I cannot say enough about veterans who go into business and are successful. I think a lot of the neighbors are negative on liquor store moving in, and I certainly understand their point of view, but I think the fact that they wouldn't speak to Mr. Woods was not the way to conduct business. I have gone out of my way to meet with the neighbors, I carried on a lengthy email conversation with several of them, it was unfortunate, some of the things that were said, but I just feel I've done due diligence for the neighbors and I would support his application. As far as the cut, I think that's a punitive change to the traffic flow. If you cut off the western entrance, you ought to widen the eastern entrance, you're inviting accidents. People passing, yes, it can accommodate two vehicles passing, but when people try and get off Kings Highway, they cut across lanes and you're going to have accidents. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Any, any other questions or comments? I'm sorry, any one else here to speak in favor of the application? Is anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Whoever is the principal spokesperson, if you would, you could come through. It's 10 minutes for the first person, three minutes for everyone else.
Hi, I'm Ashley Atkins, my address is 126 Centenary Circle, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71104. I'm just going to read you the letter that we sent in in opposition. This location sits within feet from residences and may greatly affect the living quality in the neighborhood, in addition to my home being within a couple blocks of this location. I also own and manage multiple duplexes, fourplexes and single-family homes totaling 35 potentially affected units within two blocks of this proposed liquor store. There is zero research that indicates placing a liquor store in a residential area brings anything positive to its inhabitants, it's quite the opposite. The potential increase in crime and increase in foot traffic strongly warrants denying this zoning change. Our neighborhood has worked diligently to communicate with each other regarding crime and other issues that affect our property and our family's safety. The application does not appear to show new investment dollars or positive contribution. Our companies have invested upwards of $1.75 million in the last seven years along this corridor. The occupants of these units may be affected by this proposed liquor store. We have worked to ensure that the neighborhood does not decline, but instead increases in property values. This has been demonstrated in our companies paying higher property taxes once we have remodeled and improved these properties. This proposal does not add to the enjoyment of life or property values in the surrounding neighborhood. We kindly ask you to deny this request.
All right, any questions? All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application?
Matthew Lynn, the northwest corner of Kings Highway in Crestwell. I own the property two blocks away. In, in the last year, my property has also. In the last year, my property has also been empty, and I have been fixing it up. I have put new planters outside, I put casement windows in the property, there was a fountain that needed to be refurbished, I fixed that up, the garden has been replanted, and it's a very attractive property, empty. I've had seven people that have approached me to rent the property, and I vetted them. They, I did not believe were a good fit for the neighborhood. I didn't think that they were neighborhood-friendly enough, and so I refused them. I mean, and there are multiple things that made that legitimate, and I'm still looking for the right fit to serve not only me getting rent in my pocket, which would be real nice, but also maintaining the integrity of the neighborhood in the fact that I own the property immediately adjacent to that property, and so I own all the properties congruent to it. And I don't want those properties to fall down because of an absentee tenant or someone not saying that anybody like that would happen. One of the people that was interested in my property, that I was very interested in renting to, is a restaurant based out of New Orleans. They have a restaurant in Baton Rouge, a restaurant in Lafayette, and they came and they visited, and we got in the car, and he said, "Well, tell me about your neighborhood. Tell me how this King's Highway is growing." And I said, "Well, this Don Seafood, they were gonna make it a funeral home with formaldehyde and all that stuff, and embalming fluid, and we killed." He said, "Good." He said, "It's better empty than something bad." And then I said, "Then," it's a gas station that was going in, and he said, "Well, gas stations are, you know, they're a necessary evil," I think is the way that he put that. And then I said, "And right here, they're proposing a liquor store." And he said, "Well, you know," he goes, "You think it would be, you would think that a person from New Orleans developing property in an inner-city neighborhood that I would be pro liquor all day long." He said, "I'm not." He said, "Liquor stores have their designated spot and backed up to the neighborhood. It is a foretaler of things to come, that the liquor store in itself is not that bad, but it is a domino that is going over that isn't then clicking other dominos that aren't necessarily good." Ultimately, that is the only negative that he said in reference to my property, and I didn't, and he didn't move in. He did not want to sign the lease, not because of the rent, because the rent was attractive, not because of, you know, any terms or anything else. It was, that was the only thing, and then I have reached out to him to ask him if that was the only thing, just in the last few days, and I haven't heard back from him. And it really struck me because before I was quite neutral to this.
Just one second.
And I'm almost finished.
I'll move to extend.
Motion by Mr. Joseph, second by Miss Daymar, to extend. All favorable, yes, all opposed, no. Thank you for your patience.
And so I did go to the liquor store on Lake Shore, and it's exactly like this liquor, or like this Circle K. It's, you know, by no fault of their own, other than them not investing money in it, which I've invested money in my property, and the Atkins have invested money in their property, and Brookshures is investing money in the property that they rent, they rent that from Safeway, to really bring it up. It's concrete. I mean, you can do all, I mean, you can sweep the concrete and improve the landscaping, but it's concrete. It needs something. If King's Highway is ever going to be the Magazine Street of New Orleans, we've got to have investment by the property owners in the property to plant trees, to put, you know, planters out, to do things, and to recognize the charm of King's Highway in that Lake Shore Liquor does not feel like Highland and King's Highway to me. Lake Shore Liquor, to me, feels like Lake Shore Liquor, which is another concrete parking lot liquor store, and I just don't want to see Highland and King's Highway turn into a bunch of concrete parking lot liquor stores. That's all. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Ms. Daymar, too. Mr. Lynn.
Commissioner Lynn, how are you today?
I'm good.
You do realize that this property could sell beer and wine, which is liquor, right now?
Absolutely.
Right now.
Yes, and Brookshures, I know, has been picking their stuff up as well.
So delineating hard liquor from that is okay for you? Or not okay?
You know, my issue is not, I mean, that is not so much the fact that alcohol is sold there. If someone was coming in with a Cuban liquor-type scenario where there's a balance of food and cheese and crackers and various stuff, that would be something different, but today, he said, "All he's selling is liquor, you know, beef jerky, crackers, and chips in a bag." And I mean, that's, that doesn't, that just doesn't do it for me. We've been working with Brookshures for quite some time, the MPC, and I have been working with Brookshures for quite some time, you know, asking them, saying, you know, "Not everybody wants to drive to Kroger's. Not everybody wants to drive to the Brookshures Online Avenue. Could you increase the quality of the, you know, the product? We don't want a case of ramen noodles. We want asparagus." And they've heard our cries, and they've been bringing better, newer, fresher products in, and it's been very well received by the neighborhood, and they continue to reinvest in that property, even though they don't own it. They rent it from Safeway, and so they continue to reinvest in that property because it is profitable to them.
Right. And because of this application, we can actually have some landscaping and require some of that, and you're still opposed to dressing up the parking lot with landscaping and, you know, fixed fence lines and those kind of things?
Well, none of that has been proposed, and so you don't know what you're looking at until you're looking at it, and, I mean, I realize, you know, that we're dealing with old lines, and when the Circle K wanted to go catacornered, Tom Arsenault and several others, Jeff Erickson and I held their feet to the fire. They put in, we said, "We want a pedestal sign." They put in one on a pole. The next day, we were basically out there with a hacksaw, cutting it down, and within seven days, they had removed it and corrected the issue. They have the landscaping, they have the sprinklers, and so it's something. We worked with the neighbors on where their dumpster would be, that it would be enclosed, and so it's more attractive. And I realize that we're dealing with a circumstance that this is there, and they're grandfathered in, and they can do whatever they want to do with what they've got, with the permission to do what they already have the permission to do, but whenever they're ratcheting that up a notch to sell hard liquor and nothing but hard liquor, beer, and wine and crackers, then absolutely, yeah, a lot of stuff needs to be done.
And there are recommendations for landscaping and stuff. There are.
And just because it's proposed, I mean, I'd have to see it first.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Andrews.
Mr. Lee, before you leave.
I apologize. I'm thinking way too soon.
That's correct. I know some of us have been around you long enough, maybe too long, to remember conversations about other properties going in, i.e. the funeral home, and then the other store that was proposed to sell gasoline and liquor, and you said something about if this property were to sell cheese and some other things like that, it may not be quite as bad. That property, if I remember, that was a part of their proposal, just for history. Just so you, just want you to remember that that was presented in another presentation that was voted down, not by us, but by the city council.
Right, and this would probably go to the city council also.
Thank you, Mr. Terry.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Lynn? Ms. Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
And I think, Matthew, you know I go up and down King's Highway often.
Yes, ma'am.
And just looking right across the street at that post office, I really don't see any landscaping.
It's atrocious.
Yes, and that place where he's talking about, Mr. Wood, with the liquor, 'cause I'm not for the liquor, but I'm just thinking about that place been there for, I know, was seven, I would say, seven to 10 years, and it's no landscaping there now.
Correct.
But on this proposer, site plan, whatever you want to call it, it is something on there for landscaping, and I know going up and down King's Highway, I don't see too much landscaping, and it's a lot of businesses there, even houses, but no beautification at all. And I'm just saying, I'm just elaborating on some of the things you're saying, and I'm very familiar with your place, too.
The, I mean, King's Highway used to not be as wide as it is now, and there used to be landscaping, and as the state took over the property, they took out their landscaping. And so now you have King's Highway and a telephone pole, and there's nowhere to go except taking their parking, and if they took their parking, then they could go and put landscaping in, but by taking people's parking, you devalue their property to a certain extent to where they would just have to buy the whole property, and they're not willing to do that. And so the King's Highway getting wider is a push and shove that, do you widen it, or do you leave it the same width? I say turn it to lane.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alan?
Thank you, Mr. Terry.
Mr. Young, I'm sorry, Mr. Young.
Don't go anywhere, man.
Yes, I'm right here. I started the runaway.
Don't.
This is a, this is a hard, these are getting to be harder and harder cases, because under the Unified Development Code, there's all these new requirements. Landscaping was always very subjective under the old code. It was very hard to enforce. We didn't have as much ability in it. But what we do have in the Unified Development Code is a lot more guidance, specific guidance. That gives us a lot more direction. What we also have to face is the reality, that is, is we are facing certain areas of town that are ending up with more and more vacant buildings. So we have to balance what is in the best interest of the neighborhood with is, what can we do as investments in those communities, dollar-wise, economy-wise? So it's a tough mix between how do you decide at what point you have to live with something that is not necessarily palatable, that you would want? It's not a yogurt shop, it's not a, you know, subway shop or something along that line, as opposed to another vacant building sitting on a street. The last thing we want to do is, and you can go to any particular, go down Old Mansfield Road and just look at empty building after empty building. 25 years ago, they were all occupied and thriving businesses operating on them, and now they're not. So it's a balance between the two. By the same token, I take in consideration the fact that the trend is now to get these driveways away from these major intersections, and my gut feeling is, is without a right-in or a right-out, or completely doing away with this thing and doing good landscaping across the front of it, and the petitioner telling me that that is not acceptable to them, my initial indication is, is that I got a problem with this case, that I don't necessarily was 100% against to begin with, because I'm trying to not see buildings stay empty. And if I can find a good case, limited hours of operation, because this one's, under this thing, is limited hours of operation, then my thing is more pro-business, don't leave these buildings empty. Don Seafood is a big issue for me, because we've had two shots at it, and one of them was probably gonna sell a wider variety of products than what this one's gonna sell, and it died. And to me, that was not a bad project. And so I'm looking at this one, and I'm saying, okay, it's not necessarily a bad project. I understand the opposition from the neighborhood, I get that, but if we could do certain things to mitigate that issue and not have another vacant building sitting there for years again, is it necessarily the wrong step? So it's a balancing act that we all have to do this dance, and my big issue right now in this case is that driveway. That's what bothers me probably as much as anything else. Because we're mitigating it with the only entrance on King's Highway, hours of operation is mitigating the timeframe. I was leaning more toward, this is not necessarily the best project, but it is not the worst project in the world that I could ever see as well, so. So you get, and you deal with this too, because you're a cattle ranch commissioner, you see these cases, I mean, it's a little more personal in the city, because it's a little more confined and tighter population area, but you follow where I'm going with this, is?
Well, if there's a question in there, I'll let you know that I'm willing to go head-to-head with any traffic engineering degree specialist out there, and that if you can have an access to Gilbert at the other three businesses, you can have an access to Gilbert from that business. And so I certainly don't have any opposition to them having access off of Gilbert, and especially since Gilbert is now to lane, I think that that makes it a lot easier to do that. And if that frees up the space to increase a buffer corner of greenery, I think that that would be great. And again, my strongest opposition to the liquor store aspect of it is that I want more. I want more for my neighborhood, I want more for my neighbors, I want more for my friends, I want more for me, when I live, I live walking distance from there. I would like to go there and get a, you know, a Manchuga tree, cheese, or get something that is, that I would drive to Cuban or somewhere to get, that is not at the Brookshures, it's immediately next door. And so all of that would certainly soften it in my palate, but just a hardcore liquor store on a concrete in an old Circle K building just doesn't do it for me.
Mr. Terry?
I guess the point I was trying to make is, is under the UDC, there are other things that now would be required of this property than under the past that would not be there, such as the landscaping requirements. They're pretty hard set now. There are the requirements of what they have to do and those type of things. Getting the engineer's report back and saying that driveway really has to go, that kind of gives us good guidance that, you know, to me, to vote for it, the driveway would have to go. I mean, that's just a given for me. Now, whether you put a separate drive-in off of Gilbert, that's a whole nother argument. I think that was trying to lessen the impact to the neighborhood by disfunding it on King's Highway, but that's where I'm at on this thing, as far as that goes. I know we have dealt with driveway issues after driveway issues. I mean, we were dealing with that on the Progressive Bank, we were dealing with that on, I can't tell you how many different cases we dealt with driveway issues. And if you look at the Circle K, look how far they had to throw those away. So to me, that is proper planning, okay? Is to throw those things away from the intersections. There are studies, after studies, that says that is best for traffic flow, and I think it reduces accidents, actually, so. I've just, given the UDC and the current guidelines we have under the UDC, and the fact that we really, really need redevelopment in these areas, that is just that tough balancing act that we have to face, is what is a good project versus what is, you know, good for the neighborhood, good for the community, and it's a tough call. I mean, I know it's a tough call.
Mr. Terry? Mr. Andrews?
Don't ever come in, and we're talking about the elephants in the room. Your neighborhood, your street, there's a Chevron station, all of a sudden, it's vacant right there on that corner, am I correct?
I think that that was a knee-jerk reaction to being scared out of business, is what I think that was, but that's just my backyard, that's my backseat quarterback.
Is it vacant?
It is vacant.
So that's the third business within the block of each other that's...
Absolutely.
And that's something I'm sure we'll see sometime in the very near future. Somebody's gonna come to see us about their property.
And with Dons, if they needed money, they would sell it at a fair price, but they don't need money. They live in another country and aren't even allowed in the United States, and so...
We're gonna do what we can to help King's Highway, but you gotta work, that's all.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terry.
All right. Any other, Mr. Joseph? Yes?